Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff, for leading us in that. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones, if they would, please. And there's meeting documents available for review over next to Commissioner Barth. And if you are in need of a listening device, please go to Robert or Ken, and they'll help you with obtaining that. Go ahead and begin the meeting, please.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 5th, 2013.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $539,934.53.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any questions, comments? If not, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report and the Minnehaha County Human Services report for January 2013 have been received and are on file in the auditor's office. And the Minnehaha-Lincoln County Economic Development Association 2012 annual report has been received.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about those reports? Good. Item five.
Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
I'll move routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for routine action. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Anyone have any questions for Carrie? Very quiet group this morning. We have a motion and a second to approve the routine action. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign the addendum to the administrative services agreement between Minnehaha County and UMR Incorporated for Health Plan Administrative Services. Carrie Dever.
You'll recall that we contract with several third-party administrators to help us with our health plan. UMR is the group that takes care of processing the bills, working with the care systems to make sure that they're billed correctly, helping with our summary plan descriptions, EOBs for employees. Every year at this time, we sign the administrative agreement that actually began on January 1st. It doesn't come late for us, though, because, you know, we plan for it in fall. We have these fees by November each year. So this is the formal agreement that I'm asking you to sign. As anticipated, we're looking at about a 4% cost in most of those medical service fees, which we have contracted for over a three-year period, so we'll have that again next year. And then our pharmacy is around 5%. The rest of the rate's almost identical. Staff loss remains flat, which is a great thing for us. So overall, it's looking fairly good.
Thank you. Any questions for Carrie?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I do believe that we've also sent out notices that we're going to have a pay -- we're going to skip a premium pay for insurance or whatever soon.
We had two in December.
Okay.
So we still have.
Time flies.
It does. So we're still recovering a little bit from that, but our horse took 2.8 in our health fund, so we're sitting about exactly where we thought we would after those. So we're sitting well.
That's awesome.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Beckett.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to say thank you to Carrie. I believe it was a couple of years ago when you decided to go out and look at different third-party servicers. I remember that you had looked at this, and obviously, it's worked out well for Minnehaha County.
The coalition as a whole went with a different network design. I can't take credit for it, unfortunately, but that has made a significant impact to our health claims. I look back, and, I mean, right now, we're averaging around 160. In 2009, it was closer to 200,000. Now, that is an anomaly. I mean, you know, looking back through those five years, 140, 175, we've been somewhere. But unlike other entities where they're seeing those continual rise in health claims, we're doing okay. And you have to consider that our membership has gone up during that period of time, too, and our claims are relatively flat, so we're sitting well.
Any other comments? I'd just like to make the comment about Carrie's extra involvement, if you will, with Lincoln County in that joint agreement for HR services is going well. I've gotten some positive feedback about your involvement and your staff's involvement, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Because that is a great opportunity for us to do things together, and you're making that one happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the administrative services agreement. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement. There are no notices or requests or planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Anyone who would like to make comments about any item that is not on the agenda? And I know Bonnie has a comment. If you'd like to come forward, please do that. You'll need to introduce yourselves and give us your address.
Okay, I will do that. Good morning, commissioners. I am Bonnie Duffy. I live at 2300 South Riverbuck Road in Sioux Falls. I am the representative for the Minnehaha County Commission for Inter-Lakes Community Action. I have with me Tammy Denning. She is the director for the Heartland House, which is a program for Inter-Lakes Community Action. We're here today to promote the new event for the Heartland House. It is Give From the Heart to Heartland House, which will be February 21st at the Downtown Holiday Inn City Center. We will be having a dinner, a dessert auction, and we will also be having a program that night. We are doing this as a new fundraising effort for the Heartland House. There are still tickets available. We are -- this is really more of a public awareness and an educational tool for the agency, for the public. We need to allow them to know what we do and how we do this for homeless families. During this program, we will be giving the Sergeant Shriver Award to a family that has been through this program. I think all of you know the liaison for the county commission is Jeff Barth, and he has been part of this planning committee. We're excited about this new event. We hope we see some of you there. Like I said, tickets are still available. We will also have tickets at the door. And we just want to make sure that the public is aware of what this agency does. I think -- I know that there is about, I think, 90 to 100 nonprofits now in Sioux Falls, but this one does help families that are homeless.
Thank you, Bonnie. Tammy, would you like to make any comments?
No, I would just like to kind of add on, just explaining what the Sergeant Shriver Achievement Award is. It's -- if any of you know who Sergeant Shriver was, he was the first director of the Office of Equal Opportunity during the War on Poverty. And so, community action partnerships give out this award on a yearly basis. We've decided to do it locally here in our office also, which it will be given, and a family has been chosen to receive this award. And it goes along with somebody that has gone through a community action partnership and has gone from poverty to that of self-sufficiency, and the recipient of this award has done just that. So thank you for your time today.
Tammy, you'll need to also give us your last name and your address, please.
Sure. It's Tammy Denning, and I'm at 505 Northwestern Avenue in Sioux Falls, 57104.
Any questions? Excuse me, Tammy or Bonnie? Jeff, thank you for being part of that.
I just want to reiterate, I guess it's Thursday, February 21st at the Downtown Holiday Inn. And Minnehaha County is getting a table without any tax pyramid being used at this point.
Again, thank you for your involvement. It's a wonderful program. I do miss your Christmas lights.
Yeah. Thank you for having us today.
Commissioner Beckett.
I'm always accused of being a wealth of trivial nothingness by my family, but Sergeant Shriver, not only was a person who actually headed up just what you described, but he was also a naval officer aboard the USS South Dakota during World War II, so.
Thank you for -- excuse me, thank you for coming, and we appreciate that, and we're hoping you have a successful event.
Thank you for having us.
You bet. Any other opportunities for public comment?
You can watch it if you want.
If not, we'll move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is presentation and briefing on the public advocate office 2012 annual report. Cynthia Howard.
Thank you. You should have all gotten a copy of our annual report for 2012. We had a busy year. Our 2012 caseload was 12% above our 2011 caseload. Our 2011 caseload was 13% above our 2010. So in two years, our caseload has gone up by 25%. It's been busy. So two areas where we saw a big increase last year was first in drug cases. In 2011, we closed 60 possession of controlled substance cases. In 2012, we closed 80 possession of controlled substance cases. We're seeing an increase in violent crime. I looked at the ag assault figures. In 2011, we closed 21 aggravated assault cases. In 2012, we closed 41 aggravated assault cases. And for most of 2012, we had three open murder cases in the office. So kind of the bottom line of this report is that using the standards developed by the Minnesota Public Defender, the State Public Defender Office in Minnesota, we are doing the equivalent workload of 5.5 attorneys. We have five attorneys. I do have a little bit less than a full load because I get to appear in front of you every so often when we do other managerial things. So we're almost a full attorney behind despite the fact that we added a new attorney in August. And we're very thankful that you allowed us to add an attorney in August. I think we'd all be just crazy if we didn't have her. Lindsay Di Matteo started in August. She had about five or six years of experience before she started, so she just hit the ground running. And by September, October, we could all feel the difference, and it was a big relief to have her there. As far as attorneys go, even though we're somewhat over where we should be in numbers of cases, I think right now, we're doing well. Everyone's busy, but we're not crazy. Where we're starting to feel the pinch now is with support staff. So we're going to keep looking at that, but I may this spring be asking for another support staff person, either a secretary, you know, legal office assistant, or a paralegal to help us in that part of the office. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Kelly?
Cindy, do you -- do you have -- you say you use the Minnesota guidelines. Do you have numbers for North Dakota, Wyoming, and Montana, which might be more typical of South Dakota?
Yeah. There are about 10 groups around the country that have come up with these guidelines. Those states have not. Minnesota is the closest state to us that has set out guidelines. Usually, the guidelines are developed with consultants, so I think it's kind of an expensive process to do. So not every state has come up with their own guidelines.
Well, there's no way we can compare it with states that are similar to us, then?
Minnesota's the closest.
Yeah, but I really don't consider the Twin Cities comparable to Sioux Falls.
Yeah. The small states usually, you know, the small states haven't come up with guidelines because it is an expensive process. So Wyoming, you know, Nebraska, those states have not.
Thank you. Other questions for Cindy? Cindy, thank you for being here and for your extra hard work and your commitment. We know you have done more than your fair share of meeting the needs of that department. We do appreciate your extra efforts.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next item.
Item 11 is consider a bid award for a 60 KW towable generator for the city of Colton through the Homeland Security Grant Program. Lynda Young.
Commissioners, Lynda Young, Emergency Management. Several weeks ago, you authorized bids for 60 kilowatt towable generators to be used with the Homeland Security Grant Program. Last Wednesday, bids were opened, and the bid tabulation sheet is attached. This is kind of a little bit unique. Excuse me. The first ones, because they're right in a model change over time, the first six generators would be placed at 34,488. And then, as a result of upgrades for EPA standards, anything we purchase over that would be $52,090, so a pretty significant cost as a result of emissions upgrades. So that being said, I'm requesting authorization to purchase one in the amount of $34,048. This unit will be stored in Colton and be used for emergency disaster situations within Minnehaha County and southeast South Dakota as required.
Anyone have questions for Lynn? My only question is, is did we only receive one bid? Is that --
Yep.
Is that typical?
In the past, we've received, I think we've done this three times, and the first time, we had one bid, the second time, we had two, and the third time, we had one again. So it's not atypical. Landrew had a similar situation. They requested bids earlier in December. I wanted to wait until after the first of the year, mostly for accounting and to keep my friends in the auditor's office happy. But they received one bid up there, which was a competitor, and their competitor bid was $8,000 higher than the bid that we have here, so.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Barth. So will the fire department or whatever store it up there, then?
Right now, it's going to the community, and whether the city and the fire department decide it goes in the fire station or whether it goes in public works, what's really important that is that it's maintained and that it's available for not only their use, but then community uses as a result of, you know, emergency and disasters, tornadoes, fire floods, whatever, what have you, so.
Any other questions? If not, we need Commissioner Beckett.
I'm going to vote for it, but I absolutely disagree with the fact that there is any reason to have 180% of the most closest bid on the last generator with the new EPA requirements. That's crazy. That's absolutely beyond the pale. I don't understand how the government can do that, but they're doing it.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I need a motion, I believe.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the Homeland Security equipment. And I'll just add my comment. I agree with John. That seems to be a
For a generator.
Yeah, it seems to be a significant change, just for emission standards, so to speak.
An emergency generator.
Any other comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a motion to authorize a $149,143 transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund in accordance with the 2013 budget. Darlene Johnson.
Darlene Johnson, auditor's office. We are requesting authorization to do a transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund. The amount is $149,143. That amount was part of the approved 2013 budget, and because only a portion of emergency management administrative costs are reimbursable by federal funds, so the other portion is general funds.
Questions for Darlene?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So this is just routine, right, Darlene?
Yes, it is.
Make motion to approve the transfer.
I have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. Any other questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. And I hope that Lynn is keeping you happy. Okay.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the striping and continuing maintenance of county roads within Minnehaha County. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This is an annual agreement that we signed with the DOT to participate in their statewide pavement striping plan or project. And this year is just a little bit different than previous years. In the previous years, we have striped 100% of our county highways annually, about 312 miles worth. And this year, we're changing to be more in line with what other counties are doing as a cost-saving measure. We're doing about half of them this year, and then we'll go do the other half next year, and then alternate every other year. We're going to see how that works. If we start to receive any kind of complaints or anything, we'll probably go back to every year. But right now, we're the only county that had been doing striping on every road every year. So we're going to try to switch here, and this year, our agreement is in the amount of, oh, the total agreement is about $140,000, $102,866.68 is the anticipated county portion of that contract. And that is down from last year's county portion of $161,000. If you got any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Kelly?
Did this change come down from the state, or did you do it internally?
I would say both.
Were you encouraged?
It was suggested by the state, and then we looked at it and agreed with their suggestion. They told us that we were the only county that was doing all of the miles on an annual basis, and so we looked into it, and we looked at what the state does locally and what the city does locally. And it's actually quite a big mix. The state does all of their roads annually, and they have a lot higher traffic volumes. The city does most of their roads twice a year because they have a lot more traffic than what we have on our roads. Other counties around us, and I guess all the counties in the state, they do theirs once every two years, but a lot of their roads have significantly less traffic than what we have also. So we're trying to find the perfect mixture of what everybody else is doing, so when people drive on their roads, they see the striping that they would expect.
I guess that's where I'd be concerned, is that our traffic is much higher than anything maybe than other Lincoln County.
One thing that we did throw around in ideas, we have probably 40 miles or so that are centered around the city of Sioux Falls that have a higher traffic volume, and actually, the rest of the roads have a significantly less traffic volume, similar to what other counties have. And so we looked at doing those 40 miles every year and then splitting the remainder miles in half. And the state heard that alternative, and they suggested just first trying to do half and half and see where that gets us.
Okay.
We're definitely not -- and the nice thing about this is, if we do get to a point where the striping is really bad, then we can just go and have it striped. We're not going to get to a point where there's not any striping on any of the roads. I know there are some counties that, because of funding, they've gone to a once-in-ever-three-year cycle, and if you drive down those roads, then you literally cannot see any striping. But we do have strippers on contract every year that are doing some level of striping, and so if we did decide that we wanted to add, to make sure that we get everything that we need to get, then we can just add.
There's nothing darker than a dark road in a dark night with
Exactly.
No lines. Thank you.
Other questions for D.J.? If not, look for commission action.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of one Caterpillar CB548 vibrator roller from Butler Machinery, Sioux Falls, in the amount of $143,656 off contract number 120377, competitively bid and awarded by the National IPA City of Tucson, Arizona. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners, again. Last year, we surplused our high-pack asphalt roller, which was causing a lot of problems for us, health problems and functioning problems out on projects. We had budgeted to replace that roller this year, so it was good timing, I guess, to get rid of it. We've identified this roller as what will best fit for our crew, and we've identified a contract, although it is not a state or city contract, it is a national joint purchasing contract, and that will save us about $44,000 off of the list price of the equipment. It's the same contract that we used recently, I think in December, to purchase a track skid steer, and the total purchase price is $143,656. We request your approval.
Any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Barth?
So how is it that you, you know, come across, you know, Tucson, Arizona seems a long way to go? I appreciate that, but
We didn't actually find a contract in Tucson, Arizona, like it sounds. It's a national joint purchasing agreement that is used pretty extensively, and they solicit contracts through different agencies, and so they solicited through the city of Tucson. And so when we go to this national joint purchasing agency, they give us a contract that happens to be from Tucson, Arizona.
And that would be the National IPA, then, is that?
That's correct.
IPA means something else to me, I guess, but anyway, I appreciate that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. D.J., I have a question. Do you know how much we've got on Iron Planet for the used equipment?
I'm not sure. I'd be speculating. I know it was a lot less than $143,000. But also, it's basically a different piece of equipment. The old roller that we had was made for more for parking lot type of paving, and this is a highway roller. So kind of talking apples and oranges at that point.
Darlene, I have a not-counting question, I guess. The salvage value, if you will, of the old one, does that get applied against the purchase price of the new one, or does it just show up as other income?
I don't know where we're at in that process. I assume it's already been surplused through the county and then sold, and it's added to revenue.
Okay.
Miscellaneous, yeah.
And it's highway revenue, not general fund revenue?
Was that done last year, and it was put into highway? Because I don't remember the specific one, but yes.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is to consider a motion to approve the purchase of one John Deere 329E compact loader from RDO Equipment, Sioux Falls, in the amount of $72,082.65 from contract number 060311. JVC competitively bid and awarded by the National Joint Powers Alliance. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners. This is for the purchase of a track skid loader. This is another one that is through a joint purchasing alliance, and this is the purchase price is $72,082.65, savings of $23,161 off of the list price. The interesting one, the interesting thing about this purchase is it is a new piece of equipment in our fleet that's not replacing anything. It's a new piece for our bridge maintenance crew. In the past, essentially, they did so little work requiring a skid loader, they were allowed to essentially borrow a piece of equipment from a different crew in our department. That, of course, as you know, has changed for our bridge crew, and they will be using this on a very regular basis, multiple times per week. And so this piece of equipment is a little bit smaller than the recent purchase that we had that was a track skid loader or track loader, maybe a size or two smaller than the previous one. And so we do see a cost savings, I think, of about $25,000 from that piece of equipment we purchased in December. So at this time, I'd answer any questions that you have.
Questions for D.J.? Commissioner Kelly?
What's the difference between a track loader and a skid? Is it the
Wheels versus tracks.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for D.J.? Not looking for commission action.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a John Deere compact loader from RDO Equipment. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 6 Item 16 is to consider a motion to approve a resolution to place Bridge Structure 50-205-140 located on 258th Street, County Highway 130, .2 miles east of Renner on the federal aid bridge replacement program. DJ Boothby.
Commissioners, we're following the procedures of the South Dakota DOT for this project to place this bridge replacement on a federal program, federal aid bridge program. And we're anticipating that this will be constructed in 10 to 12 years barring any pending changes to the bridge replacement programs. The state is looking closely at the program and trying to come up with something better, but they don't have any anticipated changes at this time, I guess. And so this project is a total cost of about a half million dollars. We would pay 18% of that, 18.05% of that, which would be about $100,000. Of course, in 10 to 12 years, I have no idea what that actual cost would be. But this just gets the ball rolling from a paperwork standpoint, so we have our project on their list of projects.
Questions for DJ? If not, I have one. What, I guess, is the criteria for getting a project on the federal program versus the county's complete responsibility, if you will?
Well, the real answer is, right now, I don't know because there was a recent highway bill, MAP 21, that Congress passed and those rules have not been established. Before MAP 21, once a bridge had a structural federal sufficiency rating of less than 50, then we were able to put it onto the program with the idea that it would be replaced within less than five years, given the status of our state's bridge program. It's taking greater than 10 years once it's placed on that program. But the MAP 21 highway bill changes the procedures. We're no longer going to be using the federal sufficiency rating as a key indicator for placement on the bridge program. It's changing and it's a two-year bill. They have three years to make up the rules for it. So I'll keep you posted, Jerry.
Kind of sounds like games I used to play when I was a kid. We make up the rules after we decide who wins.
So in the interim, until they do make up the rules, we're just following the old rules.
I understand and I'm not criticizing you by any means, but, and I appreciate the answer that you don't know because obviously, a lot of people don't know right now. Any other questions for DJ?
Move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wonder if we could ask DJ for an update on the weather event we just had in the highway in our county?
That would be fine. Go ahead.
We mobilized on Saturday and on Sunday to, well, Saturday to somewhat prepare and take care of some trouble spots. So just a few hours, a few people on Saturday. On Sunday, we came in at 8:00 and worked about eight to 10 hours, depending on who, which employee we're talking about. But most of the crew was in for most of the day on Sunday. And we didn't have any real significant problems from the public's perspective. We did have a tough go at it with our vehicles. Three trucks had significant breakdowns. Three snowplow trucks probably cost $10,000 to $12,000 total to make those repairs. And then we also had a pickup that broke down that services the county lots in the mornings. And then it also goes out to the bridges that are posted for wait minutes. We're working on fixing those trucks as we speak. One of them I know is back up and running. The other two, we should get done this week or next. And then we worked, beginning at 5:00 AM on Monday and today on Tuesday, and worked about nine to 10 hours yesterday and we're expecting to work about nine hours today. But after today, we should be sitting pretty good. The northwest part of the county is pretty bad. There's a lot of ice, but with the salt and the higher temps today, we should have it pretty well taken care of.
Other questions for DJ? Thank you for your extra work and your staff's extra work. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Item 17 is presentation and briefing on the 2012 year end report for the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning Rural Cleanup Project. Ryan Struff.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning. One second while I get this right. Ryan Struff with County Planning. As I'm sure you all are aware, that in June of 2010, the county was awarded a grant from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources for approximately $90,000 to hold free cleanup events in many of the rural subdivisions and unincorporated areas of the county. Residents in these areas are able to discard of household items, metal, steel, aluminum, appliances, tires, yard waste, branches, and other miscellaneous items around their property and in their homes. From 2010 to 2012, we've had 22 events in the rural area. And I do have a couple maps and a graph here to show you that goes over the totals that we've had so far. As of 2012, again, we've had very many successful events. They've been such a success that in many of the areas, more dumpsters and more trucks had to be ordered to collect the recyclable materials. Many of these residents were more than willing to lend a hand. Many came down with their trailers or skid loaders or tractors to pitch in and help out to get rid of some of the other items that we had around as residents brought them in. The residents were always extremely delighted that the county was putting on a free event for the rural citizens. And many a times, many of our staff were asked over and over again, when we'd be back again next year. So sometimes that's, we're able to go in certain areas again quicker, depending on that population base. In 2012, we had approximately $25,000 in expenses that were paid by the funds from that solid waste management grant. And to our surprise, we had just over $17,000 in waived tipping fees from the city of Sioux Falls and other in-kind related items in 2012. As of 2013, we have just under $10,000 remaining in this grant to be used in the spring of Here is just a graph showing between the fall of 2010 and the fall of 2012. You can see I just kind of divided in household wood, iron, tires, and gives us just under 500 tons of material that we've collected over the last couple of years. Again, falling, as you fall down here, it shows the number of events and the number of residential properties that we invited. So over the two years, just under 6,000 properties have been invited to these events. On here, it kind of shows the breakdown. First, on the very left shows 2010, that'd be fall of 2010. As we move to the right, spring of 2011, fall of 2011, and then the spring and fall of 2012 on the right-hand side. So everything in the colored areas there are residential properties that have been able to participate in these free cleanup events. Some of them overlap a few of the colors as we kind of progressed in learning more as we've continued with these events, that we were able to get a little bit bigger and still have a fairly good turnout. So for 2013, we're looking at the areas on the north there, one's in the yellow and one in the blue. All the other remaining properties in the green are areas that we've already been to. So we wanted to get up into the north and the eastern part of the county. The reason why we really haven't been there much is because the population is so low in respect to the rest of the county, that it makes it difficult for not only our contractors but staff trying to get a central location for them areas. Right now, the one on the left-hand side in the yellow, we're looking to be at Tri Valley in 2013, this spring sometime, May, I believe. So we will be able to see in that hole, so there'll be six townships that are invited to one spot. So that should be kind of an interesting undertake of that. Next, I just have a few photos of where we were this in 2012. Here, of course, is where we were in County Gravel Pit just west of Sioux Falls, which this area worked out great. It was a little wet in the morning, a little dark, a little foggy, but it seemed like it worked out just fine. Here are just some of our staff at work helping the residents unload some of their items that they brought down to the gravel pit that day. Again, here is just, you can see some of the, how traffic was, would flow through that site and the contractors, NOVAC sanitation being there as we had their compacting trucks and other dumpsters there. This year, 2012, was the first time we used, we hired a company to come in there to chip all the wood and branches, which cut down significantly, probably $8,000 worth of dumpsters saved by just having this wood chipper come in. And they were able to dispose of all that instead of putting it inside them dumpsters and hauling it away. Again, you see people bring their stuff on top of their vans, however they could get it there. They rented moving trucks or whatever they could to get the materials to our site. We're also in Split Rock Township. A couple of our good-hearted workers there on the bottom. Our very own Pat Herman in there and Bonnie Duffy.
That's a nice hat, Pat.
And then here are just some photos of us at the Split Rock, in Split Rock Township. Obviously, tires, couches, and different debris that people had around their property. And then also a few photos here when we were in Renner, just west of, right between the baseball field and their fire hall there. So that's all I had. Again, this is, no action is needed, just for informational purposes, so you know where we are at in 2012 and where we're going to be in 2013. But this will be our last year of using these funds. We hope to be able to budget something or be able to get some more funds in the terms of one of these grants, so.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioner Kelly?
Ryan, I think this is a great program and I know we're going to end up funding it in the future, but have you noticed significant differences in the areas that you had these programs, not only in compliance, but just overall appearance?
Yes, you know, I'd say both. Definitely cut down on some of the complaints that we've had problems with. However, there's some of the people that like to collect things in terms of our code enforcement and public nuisances, that they are the ones that, some of them do not come to these type of events unless we've already been saying, hey, we've already been, sent them letters and say, we would appreciate if you'd come to this free event, let's get rid of it before we have to go in and do something ourselves. So definitely, we have seen a lot more properties that have people, just the awareness of it and the education that we've put out there over the last couple of years has helped significantly, so.
Would there have been any good in having compliance checks before the event instead of after?
Well, in many of these areas that I'm fairly familiar with and know which properties are problem properties, if you will. But I guess we don't go through, you know, a couple of weeks before and drive every single one of them. But I think the ones that we do, we do note them when staff is out, not only myself but others, when we're doing some of the educational material and dropping them off, we will note ones that have some issues and check up on them afterwards.
So you're proactive in trying to get those people out.
Other questions for Ryan or for Pat?
Well, yeah, I don't get an opportunity to do this too often, so I just want to recognize Ryan and his hard work on making this actually, you know, he started this from scratch, this program applied for the grant and got it going. And a lot of us just show up that morning. He's already there. He's the last one to leave these sites and the time that it takes to set something like this up, so I just wanted to recognize all the work he does do to make this a success for the county. Yep, thank you.
Actually, you took the words out of my mouth, but 500 tons is a lot of stuff. And certainly, you have to take a lot of credit for being able to move that out of public view, if you will, into a proper location and we appreciate that. My only question is, is the tipping fees? I'm somewhat surprised that we don't get some sort of discount, if you will, from the city on some of that.
Actually, we do. In that grant, I said they had about $12,000, let's say, $17,500 in waived tipping fees and other in-kind, so that's an in-kind.
Oh, okay.
The city of Sioux Falls has, so I would say about $5,000. This last time was in-kind from the city of Sioux Falls donating for the tipping fees.
Sorry.
We've paid them for our disposing of our tires.
I didn't hear the in-kind part.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Any other comments or questions? Again, thank you for doing that. And I'm, like Dick, I think it presents a whole different aesthetic view of the county by being proactive and rather than having to, in some cases, go to court and clean up some of the properties. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Interesting, the support came out of two former city council members, but the city's been so successful in theirs.
Yeah, very much so.
Item 18 is an update and status report on the 88th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office. As you know, each Tuesday morning during the session, we brief you on the latest on county-related bills as they're moving through the legislative process. We're at a little bit of an interesting point at this point in the session because most of the bills that we identified early on in the session as having some importance to the county have had some level of resolution to this point. Senate Bill 70 obviously has passed, been signed into law. A number of the bills that our state association brought forward have met an unfortunate demise. But we've had some resolution on those, so I'm going to be rather brief this morning. I've identified a few bills here to go over, but as always, if you have questions on other bills, please, please ask me. The first one I was going to look at is House Bill 1045, an act to repeal the lower rate of tax imposed on income over $400 million for the bank franchise tax. And this is one that got a lot of attention when it was first introduced early on in the session and it would remove a graduated scale that lowers the bank franchise tax rate based on bank annual income between, and the graduate, the scales go between, start at $400 million, that the otherwise 6% rate is down to 5%, down to a fourth of a percent for bank income over $1.2 billion. And again, this was supposed to have a hearing yesterday morning with the, this week's session calendar is pushed back one day, so this will be heard today. But again, this is just one that I know raised a number of eyebrows when it was first introduced earlier in the session and it's going to get its first airing out today. I'm going to flip forward a few pages here. The next one I have is House Bill 1188, an act to provide for the assessment of whether a mentally ill person is dangerous and if so, to rescind his or her right to bear arms and provide penalties for violation thereof. This was brought to our attention by Scott Peters with the Minnehaha Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness. In its original form, he had some concerns with this bill and the vagueness in the language of the bill. My understanding is that it's gone through a major rewrite and that there's a substantial amendment that will be introduced when that does come before the House Health and Human Services Committee. That hasn't been scheduled yet, but that's probably a reason that it hasn't been scheduled yet, is they've been working on that and getting that into a different form that may be more acceptable. The next page forward, House Bills 1194 and 1195 are two bills dealing with fireworks. Neither one of these are the SDA/CC-sponsored bills that would give you the ability to ban the use of fireworks on the Fourth of July if... to, uh, ban, uh, the use of fireworks on the Fourth of July if, if weather permission, weather conditions, uh, drove that decision, but, um, that's, neither one of these do that. That's not this, but not these bills. Eleven Ninety-four, um, would extend the time when fireworks could be, uh, fired from the current July fifth to the Sunday following the Fourth of July. Uh, and then the second bill would, um, allow municipalities and counties to, um, enact an ordinance prohibiting the use of fireworks on, on highways and public right-of-ways if they spew garbage or, or leave, uh, remnants on, on private properties. Again, that was supposed to be heard yesterday. With the, uh, revised schedule, it'll be heard today. And then one last bill that I will mention is a, a few pages further, and it's Senate Bill One Ninety-nine, an act to exempt all property used for educational purposes from taxation. And this is one that, as I understand it, came out of a rather specific case out in the, um, West River of whether or not a, um, training center, um, accredited by, uh, the Bureau of Apprenticeship and Training, uh, could be considered, uh, tax-exempt under educational, uh, purview. And that one is, again, was scheduled for a hearing yesterday, will be, uh, before Senate taxation today.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions?
Robert, you didn't mention eleven, or, um, is it Eleven Eighty-nine?
Yeah.
Nope, um, eleven, yeah, Eleven Eighty-nine on the capital improvements levy. Have you looked at that one at all?
That's one that, um, that we have been following. Let's see, that... Yeah, would give, would give, uh, counties and townships the, the ability to enact that, um, that levy, and that was, um, came out of House Taxation eleven to three, uh, but has not been, uh, uh, scheduled on the House floor. Obviously, that would give, uh, give counties and, and townships one additional tool for, for revenues for, um...
Yeah, Robert.
For Rover, yes.
That's good for us.
Thank you very much. I, uh, I saw it was, uh, was amended, but I hadn't, I didn't, uh, didn't see what the title changed. It was, uh, Highway Superintendent DJ Boothby just told me that, uh, it's now strictly for townships. Pulled counties out off the bill, and it is, uh, strictly a township ability.
Any other questions for Robert? Thank you, Robert. We appreciate that.
Can I talk to you, Bob, Bill, too?
I guess you're on your way up here and talking anyhow.
You can always say no.
You're already here.
Pam Nelson, and if, there's a bill, Senate Bill One Forty-five, and it is revising what you have to put on your tax statements. And I really thought the bill would die, but when I looked on it today, Bob emailed me, and apparently Darlene, and said that that bill is going to, it's already passed the Senate and it's over in House Taxation. And it would be fairly significantly impacting a lot of counties. Less many, less so Minnehaha County, because we already put some of that, uh, stuff that they're interesting, like the different levies for the school district, and we put some of that on our tax bill, but they want a more in-depth, this definition. And it was explained to me this way, that perhaps that would even involve, like, when it says the school district's levy, uh, exactly what they opted out for, um, how much of their opt-out goes for education, special education, and whatever. So, it would make the tax bill lengthy, it would require a huge amount of programming. We already send our tax bills out in an envelope with, on a sheet of paper. Some counties are still just using the little cards, but, um, they're estimating it would make the tax bill three, four pages long, and that would significantly increase postage costs, envelopes, um, all of those kinds of things. So, maybe we should spend a little time talking to some legislators about the bill. I guess I, when I looked at it and talked to some legislators originally, I was told that it just tells that you'd have to put, who, about the levies on there. And we already do that, so I didn't think it impacted us so much. But as the bill comes forward, it's my understanding it does much more than that, so we should maybe be aware of that. My understanding is Bob is in here today, and, um, my understanding is this bill was also gonna be heard in, uh, House Tax. So, before it gets to the floor, we might want to call some people.
Thank you. We are happy to hear from you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the Treasurer a question?
Pam, you need to come back.
Can't get enough of you, Pam.
Well, that's good, though.
House Bill Ten Forty-two, uh, an act to authorize manufactured home, uh, dealers to submit license fees directly to the Department of Revenue, which means they would bypass you, is that right? I mean, they would pay it to the Department of Revenue?
That's my understanding.
And so, already, we have, uh, tens of thousands of dollars a year, which we don't get paid. Is the state going to use their powers, then, to track down these missing things, or are we gonna still?
No, I think we'd still have that job.
Have Sergeant Girman out there.
Because we end up collecting the tax anyway.
Okay. Well, I, I feel badly that we're not collecting more taxes on those mobile homes and, uh...
It's not...
I don't believe it's the actual mobile home taxes that they're...
It's just the license, I think.
Ah, thank you.
It's not our tax money.
I just feel that we're always losing money on those.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Treasurer.
Excuse me, Pam.
If I may, you know, it's, you know, one of the, manufactured homes are historically, uh, takers from a community, and that's why we can't all have huge tracts of mobile homes, because they're single-family dwellings, they're packed, very close together, they have kids, which they all have to go to school. Uh, it is typically, uh, they don't increase in value. So, when you look at manu- manufactured housing, they are takers of our services that we provide here, and that's why no community can have so many mobile homes beyond a certain point, because there's a tipping point, because ultimately, all your services go in those particular locations. So, um, that, that doesn't surprise me at all, but, uh, we definitely need manufactured housing in our community. But there's, uh, a realization that we have to be very mindful of the costs that are involved with providing that kind of single-family dwelling. That's just my, my viewpoint on it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pam, for coming. We'll go to the next item.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports this morning? If not, we'll go to new business. Any new business? Any old business? Okay, I, we do need to go into executive session this morning for personnel, uh, contract issues and pending lawsuit issues, so...
Holy cow. Okay, I'll make that motion. Get my lunch.
Those in favor of going into executive session, session for personnel, contract issues, and pending lawsuit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, we'll take a five-minute break.